Okay, so it looks like everyone is here, so we can go ahead and start this hearing. And so this is for Bill 20-0544. It's the laid off employees' right of recall for the purpose of requiring certain employers to recall certain employees who have been laid off after the imposition of the COVID-19 state of emergency, specifying the procedures by which the recall would operate prohibiting retaliation against employees for seeking assistance from or cooperating with the Wage Commission, empowering the Wage Commission to issue subpoenas and administer oaths, establishing certain procedures for the administration of complaints by the Wage Commission, requiring certain reports, defining certain terms, establishing certain penalties, and providing for a special effective date. Again, this resolution was introduced on June 15th. We've had a number of work sessions. We are picking up from last Thursday when we were in the middle of hearing some amendments and found out that the Law Department didn't get the last bulk of it. And so we're just going to start off by introducing the committee. We have Mary Pat Clark, Bill Henry, Christopher Burnett, Danielle McCray, a member of the committee, and we have Yitche Slifer, not a member of the committee, but he's stopping in. And we have from HR, Kim Humphrey, the Law Department, Hillary Rulie, from the Mayor's Office, Matt Stegman, and from the Council President's Office, we have Dominique McGally. So let's go ahead and have Hillary give us the update for her side for these amendments.
Sure, can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yes, I reviewed all four amendments. I sent the note late last night, but just to go over it, Amendment 1 would create a sunset. Those are generally permissible, so there's no issue there. Amendment 2 would define customary seasonal work and further clarify which employees are subject to the bill. Again, there was no legal impediment to that amendment. Same with Amendment Number 3. It clarified a former employee may make a simultaneous, sorry, former employer can make a simultaneous conditional offer of employment. Again, no legal impediment. The Fourth Amendment seems to be treating the unionized and non-unionized employees differently. It is really hard for me to tell if that would be considered legal, but in collective, 1 through 4, none of them changed the overall legal analysis on the bill because ultimately the General Assembly hasn't given local governments in Maryland the power to give people their jobs back. So regardless of the constitutionality, this exceeds the city council's authority. So none of those amendments fix that. So the Law Department stands by the report it gave. I will say, I also got a set of amendments this morning from Mr. Frank Boston, and I did my best to look at those also. And the, on those, in case the committee wants to hear those, the First Amendment by Mr. Boston would delete language that defines a qualified employee as one that could be given training to do the job, and it replaced that definition with one of a qualified employee having a similar skill set as required by the position. There's no legal impediment to that amendment, and there's no legal impediment to Mr. Boston's Second Amendment, the number of days an employee has to respond from 5 to 2, but the committee may want to consider making that clear, that it has to be 2 days after the former employee receives the offer, just so that there isn't a situation where the time to respond runs out before the former employee gets the offer. So both of Mr. Boston's amendments would meet form and legal sufficiency. But again, like with the other committee amendments, they don't change the overall legal analysis of the bill.
All right. Thank you, Hillary. Any questions or comments from any of my council colleagues?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yes, can we, can we just talk for a minute about this whole number, this Fourth, no, no, excuse me, about the whole amendment that has to do with union employees? And I believe it's changing, it was recommended for a change? I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand, perhaps, I've just read these quickly, so I might be wrong. There's something in the bill that includes returning employees who are members of unions. Is there any change to anything in the bill that applies to them? Am I, God damn this red?
Madam Chair, if I may, thank you. So Councilwoman Clark, that amendment is basically indicating that if there is a collective bargaining agreement in place, then the provisions, then that supersedes the provisions in the law.
And that's, that stays as it is, is that correct?
That's what we're, that's one of the amendments that we're offering.
But that's what you're saying in it? And that's one of your amendments?
Yes.
The sponsor's amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep, not a problem. So with the other amendments from, that was offered up from Frank Boston, I'm going to move those as well, but you already went through them. The first one is to make, is to actually exclude hotel employees, to exclude hospital employees off of that one. The second one is to basically say that the person with, who already has the experience, has prior experience within a position or has the same skills required for the position, would not require additional training for that one. The third one was to change out the days from the initial point of, I think, instead of 5 days, 2 days, but I think it's better, and I agree with Hillary, to make sure that we have, that the person knows, like, you have to get in contact with the person so they know they have 2 days to respond back. And so it's talking to that person, making it clear, it's just not saying, hey, you actually have, we tried to reach out to them and we couldn't after 2 days. So we just wanted to make that one clear as well. And so do I have anyone who moved Chris's? Oh, go ahead.
This is a process question. Are we, are we looking at Frank Boston's amendments? Is that what we're, is that where we're with now?
Yes.
Okay. So may I ask the, we haven't had a chance to talk to anyone else. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Boston and his clients. I just, I'm worried about the 2 days. And I would, I wonder if I might ask the sponsor if, what his thoughts are on these amendments, please?
I just got them, everyone else did. So obviously, I do have concerns about that piece, but yeah, I'm, I have certain concerns with that period, especially to know that there's a lot of housing and the ability to reach people may be a challenge right now, but, but yeah, these are not my amendments. Yeah, and I can't, I can't hear you, sorry.
Can you say it again? Oh, she's trying to get off. I'm muted.
I'm trying to get on. Okay, so I worry about the 2 days. I would like to leave that alone. It's very hard to get in touch with people. I understand what, what, I understand both sides of that issue, but 2 days, 5 days, I'd rather have 5, because people get busy. We all know how long it takes us to get back sometimes to people, no matter how urgent. And so I'd like to keep that. I don't have a copy, I did receive them, I don't have a copy before me, and so I wasn't aware that there were 3, but let me just say that I would caution about that 2 day and ask people to consider leaving that alone in these votes.
Okay. So let's first move to, anybody else have any questions before we?
Quick question.
Hi. Are you going to go through the other agencies?
If you have, unless you have, sure, because you didn't see this.
Because we also had.
Because you didn't have Frank Boston amendment, so go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to cut my camera on for you all. Can't figure it out. Okay. Hi. So I just wanted to put on the record that we had some concerns, we had a similar concern with regard to the 2 days. But, but we also recognize that the bill has been substantially changed as far as who it covers. So if it's limited to hotels, the hotel industry only, we're less concerned about that. So I just wanted to confirm that that was the case, since we didn't talk about that today.
Correct.
Okay.
Because we are taking out, the amendment is to take out the hospitals, so it would only affect the hotels.
Okay. So that, that's fine. We, we also had a concern. Okay, our other concern, I think the language has been taken out, but I wasn't sure what, what replaced it. It was, it was page 3, line 19, about the extent of your service, the number of days you have been in service to qualify. So we, we. Our only concern was, you know, if this extends to be to those other categories, then we did have concerns about the 90 days, because for the city, it would be a longer period of time that you had to work there to be a permanent employee. So I'm hearing that the industries covered has been modified. So I just wanted to confirm that, so I think we're good.
Okay, because that's our, that's our, I mean, my, our, my colleagues still have to vote, but that was the thought, that, you know, that's what we're proposing, to take the hospitals out. So I think it covers.
But what about the, the events and other categories? Is it just hotel, hotel employees or the hotel industry?
So that's what it was, Chris did your amendments. Chris, did your, am I missing something? Did your amendments have?
Commercial property events, the initial, you know, Mr. Boston's only covers, you know, hotels, but there were other categories that were initially included.
So I'm sorry, so no, those are just, ours is to just take out for hotels. Mr. Boston amendment was to only take out for hotels. The rest of them stay, like, we're not trying to.
So I don't see anything from Mr. Boston that removes hotels, and that would not be.
No, 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 no. I'm saying the initial bill, the initial bill covered the commercial property events and hospitality.
And hospitality, in hospitals. There's an amendment being considered by the committee that would, I believe, remove hospitals. But that's not in the original bill.
Madam Chair.
So that is, that answers your question, Kim?
Well, at the last meeting, I was under the impression that it was, that the bill was going to be limited only to the hotel industry. That's.
Is that correct?
That was what was stated.
Unless, I guess I'm missing something, so no, it was for hotel workers. Chris, am I missing something for the councilwoman? Do you have something to say?
I don't, I don't see the bridge.
Yeah, yes, I do. Wait a minute, let me get, I'm sorry, this is a, I'm having trouble. Yes, I do. Let us take the committee and sponsors amendments and then come back here, because I want, I'd like to see what, me, I'd like to know what the final bill from our votes on amendments are, and get this, these issues straightened out that, that are coming in from the hotel industry. I'd like to go in that, if that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I think Ms. Humphrey might be conflating this with the other piece of legislation we were doing last week, the retention bill, which was specifically for hotels. Is that, Ms. Humphrey, what you're?
Well, at the hearing, it, when the amendments were presented, the first 3 amendments, I believe, were very similar, so.
That's right.
So I, yeah, so I am not confused. I do want to clarify, it did seem like the, the reach of the law was changed for both.
Oh, okay. I, I was under the impression that this had a wider scope, and the sponsor seems to be in that impression also. So, okay, I don't, I don't know at all. Madam Chair, is, just to be clear, are we discussing the, the amendments that have been submitted by Mr. Boston but have not yet been moved by anyone? Because if that's the case, I thought you asked for a motion, and then we continued to have questions, but I didn't hear anyone move it.
No, we haven't moved yet, but I did, I wanted to move Chris's amendment first.
Oh, okay, I got you.
So that's where I was moving to, first to do Chris's, like.
I would be happy to move the sponsor's amendments.
Okay. And so, and I just saw MPC's second.
Second.
Amendments. Okay. So can we go ahead and take a vote for the amendments for Chris's? So yes for the Chair, yes, Shannon Snead, Robert Stilts is absent, Danielle McCray.
Yes.
Yes. Mary Pat Clark.
Yeah, um, excuse me, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, she's muted, but I'm, you were shaking your head, yes.
Yes. Muted me again.
Councilwoman Henry.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
And so we have moved as a package, and so for, moved by Councilwoman Henry, second by Mary Pat Clark, and his amendments all passed. And so the second one was for the amendments that I offered, since we outdo them individually because of the, the number that folks had a problem with. So you all want to keep them at, in the middle, I guess, at 3, or you guys will be?
Are we, are we back on, do you have?
Because we just moved his, as a, we just passed, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with this format.
You're mute, you're muted, Councilwoman.
Sorry.
So we just moved.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I know. I know that. Do you, the Chair, have amendments?
Yes, so I have amendments, but before I actually move my amendments, because we all said that you had a problem with the amendments, instead of 2 days, that I wanted to see if there, if we should take it all, vote individually, meet somewhere in the middle, here I am, trying to meet somewhere in the middle. So instead of 2 days.
Yes, I do. I have, I would, I would like to take a couple minutes for us to just discuss these amendments that are coming from the, the hotel industry. I, I just haven't had a chance to really look at them. Well, I've read them, actually, but quickly. And so I would just like a chance to, for us to vote on them one at a time and to know what they're doing, because I share with Ms. Humphrey's the concept that, you know, hotels are one of, well, right now, 3 categories that are covered by this law. I just want to make sure we all understand, or I understand, how I'm voting, because I haven't had, we haven't had a chance to hear testimony or anything, fine. But can, can we just take a minute then and talk about each one of these? So Frank, the first one, I guess, I don't know if I have them all. The one is, basically, the difference of that is that, here's the difference. Amendment 1 says that has prior experience at the position or the same type of skill set required by the position and would not require additional skill set training. That replaces something that says in this law that, that returnee, if it's a different kind of position, would be entitled to the same kind of training that a new employee would have to receive for the given position. That's the change we're making there, and I will agree. It's clearer in terms of you're in, you're out than the current language, but that's what we would be voting on, and I would like to know what the sponsor, or if he has an opinion about this particular change.
So I'll let the, I'll let Councilmember Burnett spine back to it in the meantime as well, if I can have Frank and his group ready, because we'll follow you to explain in more detail after Councilmember Burnett goes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, I haven't had a chance to, to better understanding of what it is. I mean, I read the letter with a few anecdotes in it around how experience should align. But, you know, at the end of the day, it isn't uncommon for employers to provide additional training for long-term employees, especially for folks who've been there through the thick and thin, who've, you know, been rolling with the punches up into that point, to then try to sort of bar them from coming back, because they may not have been previously trained on a new skill set before the pandemic, which in all likelihood, they would have had the pandemic not happened. And so I'm just sort of trying not to, I don't really understand why, you know, the industry is taking a position that if folks, if their own people hadn't received new, you know, training that would allow them to continue to work there, you know, why they wouldn't want to provide that for folks who've been incredibly loyal to that particular employer. I mean, we heard at the last hearing, there were a number of people who had been at these hotels for 15, 20 years, and they, they seemed to be able to do the job up until a few months ago adequately. They, these aren't folks that were let go for inability to do the job, they were let go because of the pandemic. And, you know, I would hope that employers would want to continue to support folks who've been within that long, who've been that loyal for that long, and up until this point have been able to adjust to new training and new protocols. So that, that would be my take on it.
I guess, leave it alone. God.
Councilwoman, we can't hear you because you're muted.
I know, I know. Leave it alone. Okay, I hear you, or don't hear you, but it's up to us, okay. And then there's another amendment, is there a third? The other amendment has to do with the 2, that 2 days, that 5 days goes to do. Is there some other amendment from Mr. Boston?
I mean, it's the hospital workers, removing the hospital workers.
But that's yours.
It's.
Oh, is that, I'm sorry, is there, I don't have a full.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think this would be a point of information. There were amendments that were circulated by Mr. Boston on behalf of the hotels this weekend. There was also, there was also amendments circulated by the Maryland Hospital Association. Are, are you moving both of those amendments?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I haven't seen.
I think it might be best if you separate them by origin, because that's how we've been getting information about them.
Got it, okay. Thank you. So I'm going to, we're going to elevate Frank Boston to where your question, Councilwoman Burnett, you're good, MPC, because you wanted the sponsor to speak on, so you're good, so we can move. Okay, so next, let's go to.
Yeah, thank you.
Frank, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the council. Thank you for actually considering the amendments. You know, obviously, you know, we're certainly opposed to a bill that is directed totally against one industry, us. But that said, if the bill must move, the reason for the amendment that was on the table is that the existing language is too broad and will force hotels to place workers in a position where they have no prior experience and for which they may not be suited. And this is at the expense of those who are. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, you can, keep going, I'm sorry.
And this is at the expense of those who are already trained masters of their craft. Essentially, what you're doing is, you're saying, okay, we got to bring back all workers. So Worker A, we're going to bring you back, but Worker B, you know, because your job, you know, has been eliminated or is not there right now, we're going to train you for Worker's A job, but what about Worker A? So where's, who's going to do the job, A or B? The job should go to the person who was previously there, that's the spirit of the law. For instance, a front desk attendant likely wouldn't be suited to come back to work as a line chef in the kitchen. Similarly, a line chef wouldn't necessarily be a fit for a position in a hotel accounting department. The alternative language ensures that we will bring back people in. The alternative language ensures that we will bring back people in order of seniority, provided it is to fill a position that they have worked before and/or already have experience in. This makes the recall process more manageable for hotel operators and more fair to the workers, as the order of recall will factor in their experience, skill set, and prior training. This is the most difficult environment for our industry has ever been faced with. We want to bring back all of our workers as quickly as we possibly can, but this ordinance picks the winners and losers amongst the workforce that is already reeling. So, I mean, this just, we think makes the language better. You know, Councilwoman, on the Second Amendment, from the two to five days, I, you know, I, I hear you, it just, it just leaves us out there hanging when we're trying to fill a position and we need a quick response, you know, and when we're already in a desperate situation. But, you know, maybe there's a middle ground, maybe there's a three-day or something like that.
Madam Chair, may I respond? Here's my experience in this time and place that we are in. It takes forever to reach anybody and forever for, to, to then return that call or email or whatever, because of all kinds of pressures that are on everyone. So yes, I feel that two is just not enough, and I'd like to stay at what it is. And thank you, though, for all your efforts in trying to help the industry.
Yeah, and it's, you know, understanding that, you know, where you are on the two to five days, I get that. The other amendment is, you know, it's, I think, fair, and makes the bill better. You know, we can't, we bring back people if they have prior experience or if they have experience, but if, we can't bring them back for a position that we're already bringing someone else back who is already experienced and it was their job. It's, it's just, it's just not there. We wish we could bring everybody back. We wish this virus never happened. We're hurting, we're being killed. As you can see, there are hotels downtown that are just simply closed. So that's all I have to say. The, the First Amendment, we think, certainly makes the bill better.
Any other questions, concerns from the committee members? No, okay, I'm going to go to another colleague who actually has a question. It's your slide for.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I just had one quick question about the bill. I couldn't see when looking through the bill. You know, we have people in the city who've been with the city 15, 20 years and who were abruptly laid off during COVID. Are they protected by the bill?
No.
So this is only for private industry? The city doesn't have to abide by this?
City does not have to abide by, no, it doesn't.
Thank you.
Okay, so here's the conversation. I want to meet somewhere in the middle. I hear both sides, again, with this number from two to five. I just feel like we're saying this is urgent and people need to get back to work. I understand it, so I'm like, if I'm unemployed, someone calls me back, I'm probably going to tell them yes on the, on the spot as soon as they call me. But that's just me, I'm not going to have, I'm not even going to think about it. We keep hearing from everybody that they want to get back to work ASAP. So if you get a call back, I would assume, other than making arrangements, that your answer is going to be yes. And so do we have a middle ground for the should it be? And I want to hear from my colleagues. Is there any middle ground to, are you're totally out, are you saying, MPC, keep it at five? Can we go to three? Councilman Henry?
Madam Chair, what I would just ask is, if, if you're moving these amendments, is there anybody seconding them before we continue to spend time on discussion? Because if not, I'd like to move to the next set of amendments.
We don't have a motion on the floor, and we need it, or else we're wasting our time, I think. Thank you.
Is there a motion? I, I'll do the motion. I'm going to move the amendments as a package, or?
Just, again, to clarify, a point of information, are these the amendments from Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Call for division. I want them voted on separately, please.
Okay.
Division.
So for the first bill, I mean, for the First Amendment, and that's the, let me go to my notes, excuse me. Oh, the First Amendment, employer does not include a hospital as defined in State General Article.
Point of information, that's, this is, this is where I was pointing out earlier, that some of these amendments were introduced or suggested by the Maryland Hospital Association, and some were suggested by Mr. Boston, and so.
We're going to pick Boston's first?
Yes.
So amendment number one from Frank Boston, amendment number one.
Madam Chair, which one is your screen? Throwing everyone off, that's not.
What's on, what's on, what's on the screen is all of them mixed together.
Got it, sorry, everybody's, sorry. So let's go from the screen, amendment number one here. And so.
Which is from the hospital administration.
And this is from the hospital, and this is defining the definition. And so maybe, do I, hold on for one moment.
Can you hear me? I can't hear anything. It's Mary Pat.
Yes.
Mary Pat, we can hear you.
Thank you. I can't hear you.
Right, I'm, let me take, let me remove my screen, I'm sorry, MPC, because I'm just getting clarity on something. So hold on for one moment.
I don't know what I'm doing.
Okay, everybody, here we go. So we're, I'm actually going to, and he's going to put it back on his screen, Sam will put it back on the screen so we can vote this out correctly. Okay. So on the screen that you see for amendment number one, I am offering that one up on behalf of the hospitals. Can I get a second for amendment number one that's on the screen?
Second from Councilmember McCray.
Perfect. And now we'll go through the rounds. Yes, for me, Councilwoman Shannon Snead, Robert Stokes is absent, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark.
No.
No, okay. And Councilwoman Danielle McCray?
Yes.
Councilman Bill Henry?
Yes.
This bill passes. This amendment passes, thank you. We'll now go to what you see on the screen as amendment number two. And so I'm going to need a second. I'm moving this on behalf of Frank Boston, where this is, again, amendment number two.
Second from Councilmember McCray.
Perfect. I'm a yes, Councilman Robert Stokes is absent, Councilwoman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
No.
Councilman Bill Henry?
No.
No, so this does not meet, it fails, because it couldn't meet, we didn't get the number votes out, okay. Moving right along to amendment number three, that I am offering for Frank Boston, with changing the numbers, can I get a second? No second, then this amendment dies as well. All right. And so we've got all the amendments covered. We will now move the entire bill for, oh.
Did we do?
We already moved Chris.
Did we?
Yes.
Mary Pat, you're muted.
Madam Chair, I move the bill as amended.
Second. My Councilman Henry.
Thank you. Mary Pat Clark moved the bill, Bill Henry seconded the bill.
Are there no more amendments?
No more amendments.
Can we, what does it say that the bill is only for private employers?
Ask that question one more time, I'm sorry. Where does it?
The city has janitors, we control some large properties, and so we employ janitors and other folks that fall within. So I just wanted to clarify, because a second ago, we said that it doesn't apply to city workers.
With the sponsor of the bill, Chris Burnett, can you explain that part of it? Councilmember Burnett?
Yeah, sorry, I dropped the, hold on one second. So, sorry.
Or can we have the law department explain it?
I'm just trying to give you the exact, where, so the bill's pretty clear that it includes, it specifies that some properties fall under that. I mean, unless.
I actually can't hear you that well, Councilmember Burnett, sorry.
I actually can't hear you that well, Councilmember Burnett, sorry.
One second, hold on.
Oh, you're good. That was, we had to mute someone, but you're good now.
Yeah, so the bill is very specific. I'm trying to pull up the original bill. I have all the amendments in front of me. But it, it specifies commercial properties, hospitals. It is, the bill is very specific in who this applies to.
Point of information. Councilman? I do have the bill in front of me. And I think Ms. Humphrey's concern is that the definition of commercial property employer means an owner, operator, manager, or lessie, including a contractor, subcontractor, or sublessie of a non-residential property in the city that employs 25 or more janitorial maintenance or security service employees. And that definition would seem to include the city of Baltimore, since there is not an exclusion for the city of Baltimore as, for example, there is excluding the Maryland Stadium Authority from event center employers. So.
Based on that definition?
Yeah, so I think that's the specific question for the Law Department. Is there any reason why the city would be intrinsically excluded from this law? Or is all of this stuff also applicable to city employees? In which case, I think Ms. Humphrey has specific concerns. Is that fair, Ms. Humphrey? Okay.
Can we get the Law Department? Elena, can you?
Yeah, and this is Hillary Ruley. It's not clear. I think you could read "commercial employer" to be not a government and you could read it to intend to include government. So, I, I think it's best if the committee clarifies what it wants.
If I could interject, this is Elena. It, it does make a distinction, too, between a commercial and a property employer and an event center employer. Then the event center employer would seem to capture the convention center, which is all city employees. Then there are a multitude of employees, I would imagine, that fall under the category of janitorial and security. So. So, it is very, and there is no exclusion for a publicly operated event center. So, that probably should be clarified.
Point of, point of order or whatever. Should we clarify it now? As an amendment? Is there an amendment that we could? I mean, we've already got protest letters from the Hilton. That's presumably still owned by the city. That's.
But they're not.
I'm not, not that, all right, so. And the convention center is clearly involved. It's always been presumed. Is there an amendment? Is there a word? Or is there a line that we could add, perhaps on second reader this evening, just for a clarification? Not new issue, but, you know, a, an amendment that clarifies. Could we ask that?
Sorry, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, if you can answer.
Well, I mean, I, I only made that clarification to, I, to make certain that that was what Ms. Humphrey was, was referring to. I'm not saying that we need to exclude the city. And I would say.
I'm not either.
Yeah, before we would, before we would even consider that, I would wanna understand what is the negative impact on the city such that we wouldn't wanna just have the same practice for our own employees that we are, you know, requiring other private companies to do. It's like, usually, it's the other way around. Usually, we're requiring other people to do stuff we're already doing that are part of our contracts, our negotiations. Are we not already guaranteeing that we would rehire people in order of seniority if we lay them off? And if we aren't, and if we aren't already doing that, why shouldn't we?
I, so, just to be clear, I am not arguing that we be, that the city be excluded. I just wanted to raise, again, the point about the acceptance. Because we are having, we have a lot of issues on rehiring and turnover. So, we would like to have that shorter period of time for accepting, for acceptance. So, that was initially why that, that, yeah. That was why I raised that issue on Mr. Boston's amendment. And so that, so we'd be asking that it be two days instead of five. But we could also be amenable to three days.
Point of order, we're in the middle of a motion and there is an issue that needs clarification. Because I think we have a consensus as a committee and that we expected the city to be involved in this according to those contractors or employees that work at, for example, the convention center, that work at the Hilton, whatever. But we're in the middle of adopting a bill as amended that I would highly recommend we get a clarifying amendment for, by 5:00 this evening. It shouldn't be very difficult to write. Of course, I'm not a lawyer. But I would imagine that just has a line that says, hey, we're talking about the city government, too. So, I'd like to finish this motion to approve as currently amended. And I think we'd all like to see, if, if it goes forward, a clarification amendment. So, we can't really do it on the run. But they should be able to put one together by 5:00 this afternoon. Can we get back to the?
Hold, hold on, Councilwoman. Elena, you came on the screen. Were you about to?
I just wanted to point out, if it did move forward as applicable to the convention center, it might become a, the city in a weird position of being required by the state to do one thing from one agency, whereas other janitorial type positions within the city. I mean, maybe we're doing it voluntarily, but they wouldn't be subject to this. So, it would be one agency, janitorial, security, maintenance type employees that would be subject to this bill, but no other similarly titled employees in other agencies being subject to it. That, that just seems like an awkward position to be in. But that's for y'all to decide.
I'm gonna decide it. Decisions, could we move forward the bill as amended? There's a motion on the floor.
Madam Chair.
Hold on, Councilwoman. Go ahead, Kayla.
Just wanted to say a few things. First and foremost, from a parliamentary procedure standpoint, Councilwoman is right, there is a motion on the floor, but the motion is for the full bill. It's important, I think this conversation is important for the full bill and therefore, the discussion will be appropriate if necessary. But also, from a staff management perspective, I just wanna make sure that the committee knows that in order for this bill to be able to move to second reader, we do need to be done probably in the next 30 minutes. So, just wanted to give you both sides of that perspective as well.
Thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor.
Or voted down. It's been duly moved and seconded.
So, can we, we'll proceed and keeping, keeping it going. So, we need to do. Got Bill second, the Bill second? Yes. Oh, so Bill second, so let's move. So, yes to myself, Council. Yes to myself, Councilwoman Shannon Snead. Robert Stokes is absent. Mary Pat Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Danielle McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilman Bill Henry?
Yes.
Yes. So, this moves, we, this moves, it will go to floor tonight. We have gotten it out with the amendments included in this package. Am I forgetting anything else? That's it, okay. So, it moves. Anything else? Got it. Okay, so that's it. So, it will be on the floor for tonight's meeting, for a vote tonight. That's it, this meeting is, we're finished. Thank you.